Oh, yeah, we're just waiting here.
Your work, okay, thank you. Welcome, those of us who were at Board Workshop here for October 4th. And this evening I guess we're missing Carl. We have to stand in for him. And I'll come to table. I guess the first item tonight is a discussion on income limits for certain tax exemptions. We have heard a presentation on that, on this. And you have information here in front of you regarding the local option. And I believe that this is pretty much the power point, right?
Yes.
That was presented.
I would like to agree.
The other night. And I don't, I really would like to know if we do raise what the added numbers would be. And that is where I know that we were told that there's really not a way to find out easily, though it could be done.
I did do the roughest estimate imaginable on your little half sheet. I took the, are we writing?
Hello?
I took the information from Donna's presentation. Started with the number of households and then cut that down by the percentage that are over 65 or disabled. That takes us down to 880 potentially eligible households. Then 40% of all housing in the village is owner occupied. So assuming that that owner occupation is distributed evenly, they'll take us down to 353 households. And then if the median household income is 56K, then we can assume that half of the households have a median household income that is below that number. So if every single qualifying, if every single household met all the criteria, which is not optional, that absolute most that we would be redistributing to the other taxpayers would be just under 16,000. But I think it's far, I think like half of that is maybe a little more reasonable estimate.
That's if we were to raise that maximum to 33.
That's if we went up to the max and all of the eligible households, well, I just made a whole bunch of assumptions that aren't that problematic.
I would never hope to go to the max, but if he was talking 55, they're trying to give it back.
Yeah.
I'm looking at your number of, say, 33. 33.
Well, I'm just looking at inflation alone. I just rounded up a little bit Southern ice cream numbers from the inflation increase.
So what's the town? Does anybody know?
I have not heard. I mean, they haven't tried it yet.
Do you have a chance to talk to the supervisor? You were going to call them about something.
I, it's not about this. Maybe on Thursday when I see him.
We were meeting Friday with him. We were meeting Friday with him too.
Okay, what was that?
I think that's an option, but I'm just going to go there.
I, I would not, and that would be something that I would want to have to make a decision. Or at least have an idea where we're going.
Just easier on the, it's easier on the accessory if everybody knows the same thing.
Well, it is.
Other than him, different numbers for the village or the school or whatever.
Right, yes. And I don't know what their...
And it was the same in 2010 when it changed. The village and the town did the same thing.
We were a little later in making that decision.
What was it said? Actually, so the village is less impacted. Most of the revenue for the village comes from sales data, but you get for private taxes. It's not really significantly affected as one year. If it didn't actually. It's different for the town and the schools. Because the town is a good sales guy.
No, not good. Are you there, Dan, again?
Yeah, my first team was to see what they were doing or... Inflation value, what, 22 was 32 before?
Just to do it again.
Yeah. But I also agree that consistency with the town doesn't affect us.
Hey, I agree. And I don't think it's going to get us anything like the town.
Especially if, let's say the village decided to go less with the town. Maybe, you know, Phil dress has paid county access to, for their question in a while. How can you try and get a bigger, who's short for the town and for the village?
It's also...
You get it, Tom? Just from, if I was a village, if I was a senior, they didn't comment whatever they were saying, it just makes sense to get it to say.
But I don't know what to do right until we find out.
Right. And we could ask Thursday.
I see him Thursday.
I just, I just asked Karen, and she said they're waiting to see what food is. Yes.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Also, make it right, what do you guys think? Mind if I stick, what do you go up to 50,000 and you're thinking about 36, Eric?
How about with a number in town? Town is just...
It's adjusted for today's dollar, person. The adjustment through to the 50% from 26. And 5% goes up, so then basically at 42,000.
So is this gross income, the numbers? Like what income, I didn't look at, like what income are they...
It never, it's never supposed to be gross.
How does, how does someone need to survive these days with 36,000 dollars? I don't even know how to...
It's real low. Right. Those two are stern.
And again, that's before 50%. Well, I guess we'll wait and talk with...
Yeah, it makes sense.
See what the feeling is coming from, how do you come to town?
Makes sense.
I'll see what happens. I will ask him on Thursday and probably have a follow-up on Friday.
I saw them at the door.
All right. Next, we have the board treasurer update. And we, and we march forward, both of you.
We work together.
I'll say that in general.
So I don't have to do a small thing.
Makes sense.
Thank you very much.
So we just, there was a discussion a while ago about how much we're paying the bid and LITA, and Carl was asking that. And we, it just dawned on me that, the other day, originally, that the budget used to say LITA slash bid. And our past treasurer was paying LITA, it was in there as 18, but we were paying 17. But we just never knew that because it was just, it says LITA 18, but really the check was 17. Now it's 19, but regardless. So it turns out we were paying the bid 1,000. And over the last two years, we have not paid that because one year they didn't, they would just send us a bill for something that was close to that amount for like Jazz Fest or something. And we would reimburse them for that. But we didn't have Jazz Fest for one year, and then one year, I think Elena just forgot to ask for it. But it made us think like, oh, it wasn't in the budget this year. And we just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page with what we're paying the bid and if that's something you still want to do, what's the amount that you'd want to for next year. But in addition to that, we were paying a couple of things, like we were splitting a Penny Saver ad. And with them, and on top of that, we were also, what's the other thing? Oh, our time.
Our time and like a few things for the stage for Jazz Fest, stuff like that.
Couple of things that like our guys need to do what they need to do for their part. So, but this year, it was, our guys' time was probably used a little bit more because we no longer have the special police. So I wanted to make sure, Elena had just said to us, she was told by Rob, and I'll just invoice the village 1,000. She didn't really know, and it didn't seem like you guys, I didn't know exactly. So we just wanted to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Well, I think we should have some sort of written agreement, like, hey, we'll do 1,000 now, maybe it's 1,500, whatever they tell us, I think we have to get an agreement or some sort of thing.
Well, the village, good question.
I did call Donna.
The village shouldn't be paying the bid anything. The bid comes up with its budget, which you're supposed to review every year. And then they collect it as a special assessment on their taxes. Then it comes, the village collects it and just passes it through to the bid.
So it's basically...
So if they, if they, I don't know what this thousand dollars is for, but if they under budgeted or something, it's really not the village's fault. Or I can see the village, if you want to contribute in kind services, like, all fine, well, you just do that. You don't send a bill to anybody. You just have Jake's guys go set up the barriers or whatever the heck they do. But, but the village shouldn't be paying, shouldn't be paying for part of the Jazz Fest stage or any of that stuff. If the village wants to do that, fine, but have the village contract with whoever you get the stage from directly. And then don't do it through the bid. That's not the way it's supposed to work. Well, because, because probably, I don't know who does the budget, but they're probably not the greatest at doing a budget. And they figure there's some shortfall and we'll just build the village for whatever our shortfall is. Well, that's not how it's supposed to work.
Well, and we contribute to help loss, we contribute to...
It's different.
I know.
They're totally different, both apples and oranges.
Right, but they do...
Because they can collect whatever amount they want to collect from the bid property to cover all of their events.
It's obviously something useful.
And if they, if they don't collect enough, well... You know, you'd think they would have figured it, well, here, here's our budget for the Jazz Fest, includes a state of the, they add all their events up and all this stuff they want to do, and it comes to X dollars. And then, and then they collect that from the property owner.
And I don't think they factor our, they definitely don't factor in our guys' time or the money given in.
Well, if the village wants to contribute that, then they don't have to.
I wouldn't, they don't have to.
No, I wouldn't, I'm just saying.
I wouldn't say that they have to do that. Or that would be something that would...
I, I just, I don't think it's, I did ask my mom about it when I was there, if the village board wants to contribute. I mean, it does obviously add community enrichment. It does obviously add a lot of, it's part of Trick or Treat Trail, there's a lot of benefits to what the bid does for our residents, so. But we just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page. And I did call Donna, and he was like, yeah, we should definitely go this up.
Well, I think if they're short and they need something, and if they go to the village and say, look, if we don't have money to pay for this day or the other thing, will the village cover it? Say yes, but then have the village deal directly with the vendor. Rather than this, this nebulous thousand dollars that they can spend however they want.
Yeah, which I don't know if they are short. It's just what we don't always just give it, so I like that.
I think traditionally they've given us the bill for the movies, let's say, the license into the movies, bill to show them, and we, and we paid a thousand dollars towards that effort, whatever it is. But keep in mind also, the bid, all those pots that we just stood up in the street, the bid paid for all the plants, you know, not the hanging baskets and stuff, not the ground ones, but whatever's in those planters, and you just cover that, and that's considerable.
And for however many years, they pay for Santa outright. We don't pay for that. And for the longest time, that was in our office too. So, and I can't imagine Santa was... I don't know. We, we've never, they just paid that part.
So we've never had any kind of, do you think we made a part of any of this?
Not that I've, I have...
It was way back when, I remember. And it was just, it was kind of a, you know, it was kind of a, here's the budget, a thousand dollars for the village, and then you said tours, and you said, and I think they've only submitted invoices in the past.
Yeah.
Here's a, here's a 1,500 dollar bill, you pay a thousand dollars of it, or whatever, reimburse us a thousand dollars for this bill, right around there. I mean, I understand that's in...
The last one actually was in 2019. In 2019, we paid a thousand. Last year, it was like 400 something.
Last year, we didn't, well, the last time we wrote a check directly to the bid for anything other than their taxes was in 19. And it was called, I don't know, annual contribution or something.
Well, I think a lot of things got contributed because of COVID. A lot of things that just didn't happen.
Yeah, right.
And especially for these, I mean, it's another good one.
So, yeah, we just wanted to make sure everyone had the same thing in their minds for how I should be budgeting and what we can tell bid to expect from us.
Can we cover, can we have the expectation we can cover a three thousand dollar?
Yeah, if you want.
I think if you need anything you want, I think that's all for asking, what we want to do.
A thousand is, I just need to know.
That basically, I know that in terms of proceeds, that they definitely never contribute a lot of that.
I know. And we've not had enough, a lot of people, businesses that have been in the village these last few years, it's like true. We're trying now to start promoting, we've got some live people again that are really trying to get some support, that they weren't going to the bill, more and more involvement with everyone, more members, I mean, it's been not good these last few years.
Same thing, again, that, that certainly should happen.
I mean, I go back to the Kathy Turriamo days, I mean, you just trying to...
I would, I would probably say personally, I would, you know, they are invoicing us up to 1,000, you know, for things that are directly related to things that are happening in the village.
Okay, and that's on top of the, we've been paying for the Penny Saver, or half of the Penny Saver and the Jazz Fest stage stuff, as well as our guys' time. So do you want to roll the Penny Saver and the Jazz Fest?
How much is Penny Saver?
Pardon?
How much is the Penny Saver? Do you know? Total with the bid?
Yes. In two years, or in two, we were doing part of, we were splitting Trick or Treat Trail and the White Christmas ad, and our part of it was 800.
And for the, White Christmas and Trick or Treat?
Correct.
What's our labor cost for...
Labor cost about, so far to date, it's worth about 2,800 dollars. You have 22 events, that comes out to about 130 dollars per event. We don't support them in every event. We've supported them with the, you know, primarily this year, they've been doing a lot more of the family game nights. But it's, you know, it's one guy there, but it's there, you know, doing the garbage and making sure that the barricades and then setting up the tables and chairs and taking them down and putting them all away, so. So that's, that's a little more labor intensive, but you know, it's, you know, it was more this year, when I looked at it, I was kind of greatly surprised. We spread out over all the things that they do for the community and for the village, 130 bucks.
Yeah, I think that should be outside of the thousand.
And we were anticipating having our guys, we still know, for White Christmas, but off the record, there may, we may not be doing the parade, like, so, but it's going to happen. So we've heard, we've heard good news.
Not off the record when you say it.
I didn't, I did not say what I heard. I just said it sounds like we have good news, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, there's, the fire department has been doing it this year.
Yeah, I'm into that. Yeah. The fire department is going to do our Christmas parade.
I didn't know if that was 100%, I just said, so, well, that's why I said off the record.
You know, obviously it's contingent on the, on the support of the police, and they've been great within the different parades and different events that we've had. But, you know, it's, it's certainly a challenge, though it's a special police, so, from the, you know, I put on my fire department ad, we're working on that. We just had a discussion on it last night, so we're going to see if we can make that happen. So obviously, that's a huge, a ton of people in the community, so it'd be really, really bad if that went away.
It's great.
It's a big one.
But I understand the bid not wanting to take that on anymore because that's something that's kind of outside, you know, a lot of moving parts that. It's not, not one section of the streets relatively simple when you compare it to a parade that has, you know, a road or different closing times and kind of rolls down, and it's relatively short, but it's disruptive for sure for that short period of time.
And safety, because we have people driving up onto the parade route, like with cars when the roads block off, it's not good.
Yeah, thousand bucks and then other stuff should be out of that.
Out of that now?
Yeah, no, no, outside of that. Meaning 100 just ads that be supporting a many of those. I'm the loudest person in this room, if you can't hear me, I'm sorry, sir. It doesn't get louder than me.
I know.
I can't.
So we're seeing 1,000 plus Penny Saver plus Jazz Fest hardware. Is that what we're seeing?
Hardware?
The stage, what's in that stuff?
About 160 bucks. It was the towers in there in the streets that we put the light on, the lights on. So there's, it was two tower sections, if you will. I don't know what they're called, there's some stage animal, I don't know what they are, or a roadie, I don't know what they're called, but big, those trusses, trusses to them, they call, we got a big plate for them, and we string the lights to the middle of the street.
Yeah, so those are pretty cool.
Yeah, it looks cool. They're asking for bigger, brighter lights next year if we can, but that was something they asked.
I'd like brighter.
Okay, so 1,000 plus Penny Saver plus stage and light type things?
Yeah. We were driving now, looking at cost with the app, we're covering the hardware. What did we cover?
We covered all of that.
Probably. First, they have to contribute to like the people in the village.
Well, that's what we want.
It's significant. We want that. And part of, at least one of the suggestions in this bid that we have for that four and a half million is lighting out the street, which would basically do some of the towers and lighting all the...
That's what I was pushing for.
Well, that would be...
Okay, thank you. We're going to meet with Elena and Madhavna and just see if everybody has anything to do.
When you should come in, let me know.
I would be interested to see what we can talk about.
All right, come in.
Okay, 1,000 plus Penny Saver plus Jazz Fest stuff, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I guess we have a discussion next about virtual meetings. Donna, this is something that you have brought up because I thought the law was pretty good for you.
We talked about this before. So basically, you either have to, if you want to allow meetings by video conference for more than just this board, so we're going to do more.
By Marshall.
Or any other board of the village, you can do it by vote of law. If you want to do it just for this board, you can pass it by a resolution, but the resolution still requires a public hearing.
I believe that there can be certain, we can't certain have the reasons for a virtual meeting, a call-in, and it has to be, in addition, that probably would have to be if there is a true board member already physically present, I believe. And I thought that there was specific reasons for the, not just I'll have COVID, I'm staying home, and I have laryngitis, I'm staying home, but it has to be something that's pretty...
There's a state of emergency, we can help. We can hold a totally virtual.
I would think so.
What answer America's like.
Right. But Daryl's a mayor, just declare that at any point.
Not because he has a cold, it's not his standing over. Or if he's going to Florida, it's a state of emergency.
And that hurricane just wiped out 50% of the...
Yeah, now my friends in Fort Myers are, yeah, they lost everything.
So why does he not adhere and discuss this?
Well, he said he wanted it, then he let it go. He said your interest was to do it and then we pursue it.
I think that's number three, Jerry, in the back of the, on the last numbers, I'm able... So those are things that we...
Right, which says which includes disability, illness.
Yeah.
Caregiving responsibility, any other significant, unexpected factor or effect.
Yep.
So you could stay home to care give for a loved one?
No, we, I learned there was a stipulation at, at, at the Nikon Conference that you can vote from where you are if you pass this local law, but there has to be a quorum here.
Where are three people?
Yes. And then you can, if not, and.
Four, four reasons, four reasons there is significant, not for such a, so we're aware of the board.
Yeah, the board determines that, whatever the, the necessary or thing is.
Area, that's a big one.
Yeah, where is that? I don't, for everybody to decide.
But you're, you're supposed to adapt written procedures, which would include the circumstances, the extraordinary circumstances, in which a member is allowed to participate in a video conference, which would include disability, homelessness, or other significant or unexpected thing. So, so I guess, so the question is. So the question is, do you, do you want to be able to, other than a declaration of a state of emergency, by the government or the county, do you want to be able to participate in a meeting via video conference? Because if you do, the only way you can do it is by this new law. And then, you have the choice, if, if you decide you want to do it, and the choice is to just pass a resolution following a public hearing, but would permit just this board to do it, and then its own board or any other public, like, the village, where they adapt their own resolution after a public hearing. Or, you can do the local law, which would include everything, all boards.
I definitely think I'm in favor of it.
I would, um, I would, uh. To me, I only see, I only see two boards, one which would be resuming, the doors are filled, um, because right now, they're at the bottom, and one is sick, and I would like to be able to participate in these, like, until we get, like, alternate.
Probably a cleaner should do it for both, so that just consists of that.
Okay.
Well, then, if, if there are other boards, there's a recreation board, there's.
There is sort, those are committees.
Those are committees, yeah.
No, I think that, well, whether you call it a committee or a board, they're still subject to the open fees.
Correct. Conditions?
There, you know, it doesn't matter what you call it, there's something else, there's also.
Yeah, but they, you, the, the person in record doesn't even have three people in the first, that's different, they don't, oh, they don't, oh, well.
Well, I guess ideally, that board would not have less than three member, members in perpetuity, you know? So if you ever ended, if the village ever ended up with a full board, you could do a local law and make it, make it here, remote meetings, the same with historic preservation. So, you know, there are those two. Whether they take advantage of it or not, who knows, but at least they have, they would have the ability to do so. Because probably if you left it to them to hold a public meeting and adopt a resolution, they'll never be able. And it's not that big a deal if you do a local law, you gotta have a public hearing anyhow, whether it's by resolution or anyhow. A resolution would basically have everything that the local law has, and so it's not that, it's not that, it's not that big a deal if you work by the local law, if it was just a resolution.
And then it covers everything.
And it covered, covered everything.
Yeah, yeah, I like that better, and then everything's checked off, I like that.
Just in case.
Because basically, if, uh, if the, um, uh, are from that or a struggle, if they didn't have enough people that were able to attend for some reason, um, they, they thought they would hold.
They don't need a, they don't need a quorum to meet, right? They, they don't need, or if it's only his true people, since it's a committee, so there's no quorum for that. So, if one, you know, there's three people and one person's sick, two people have to be here, no, what made a difference to them? That's where I struggle if I have that. They don't have no quorum, they don't have any.
And then we don't.
Oh, well, then.
Well, it's simple, you will cover everything, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Do you listen?
Not, I don't.
And you don't know how theirs would be written, and if they decide to, it seems thinner to, yeah, have it all, yes.
Okay.
Three more across, maybe, or, across the boards.
Yes.
So, uh, we'll need that.
All right, so I'll put a local law together.
And we need a public hearing on that, and.
I'll, I'll, I'll put that together and get it, get it to others, so, if you get in with the agenda, it's got to roll up.
Thank you.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, uh, what we have last here is a discussion apparently on Xerox flow adjustment. Jake, you want to speak to that?
Yes. Um, Xerox in May, excuse me, June, um, every month, uh, around the time of the month, they give us the numbers, their flows for the previous month, um, which we already taken out there, it's called Building 302, which is over there, apart from that. Uh, from those numbers, we subtract, um, I'm sorry, we subtract, um, oh, I moved it, so from those numbers, we subtract, we have a flow meter on Phillips Garden Orchard Street, and that is what, what we use to figure out their invoice every month. As you can see, the gray line here, and I stupidly printed out all five, or six, almost enough for everybody, uh, before I added the July and August numbers that I had, so it's, I just printed out one big one here, and you can see the green line is, is this year, and you can see where everything was the last few years, and the green line, uh, May and June certainly are outliers, in that, in that data. Um, soon as we found out, as soon as we got the numbers, we called them up there and said, yeah, there's something, something's out of whack. They said they sent us forty-eight million gallons to 302. Um, our old plant came brought in about forty-two million gallons, so obviously, they couldn't send us more than we had, and I guarantee everybody in the village didn't hold it for a month, so, we, um, there's something amiss. Um, we looked at our flow meter, you know, double-checked the calibration on that, they went through and had theirs checked again, um, there was a little adjustment, it doesn't account for the difference in the flow. Our flow meters, uh, it goes through what they call a bar shelf flume, where they measure the, this, the width of the, um, channel that it's going through, and then off of that, there's a ultrasonic, uh, measuring device on top that's going down, so they can tell the depth down to the, to the water level, and using, always they can figure out how many gallons per minute's going through there, because they know what it is. And we've had goofy measurements, we use a similar thing on some of our pump stations, and sometimes you get a high flow alarm and there's a spider in there. I don't know, whatever residence time for a spider, it's probably not two months, so that doesn't explain it, um, but sometimes you get something that crawls underneath, um, and it's, you know, it's getting the signal back, and it seems like it's really, really high. Um, we checked that, we checked a, our, you know, like I said, their flow meter, our flow meter, we checked lines ahead and behind, where they flow measured, so if there was a restriction just downstream of where their flow measuring was, that would arbitrarily keep it high, if it was restricting the flow, trying to get through there, and then if it stayed high for a long period of time, it would translate into a lot of gallons per minute, even though it was just kind of a stagnant, or slower flow there, but if it was just kept higher, um, we checked that. There was nothing that popped out at us as being inherently obvious, there was little adjustments here and there, um, but nothing that really said, you know, hey, here's what it is, here's the big problem. So we feel good that we checked it out, we've been nice to find something, um, but ultimately, we know the numbers weren't right. So we worked with Xerox, went back and forth, um, did all our due diligence trying to figure out what it was, um, and too bad Marshall just left too, because I've worked with her on it, they sent us, um, um, kind of a proposal to use twenty-two million gallons as kind of what their average has been for flow. Um, that seemed kind of arbitrary to me, because I can't just, you know, you had twenty-two million, there's so many different factors, you know, processes that they're doing, there's weather factors, there's groundwater, um, speaking of groundwater, we even looked at, we did a search back on when there was water breaks, and stakeout requests, and where water breaks were on their campus, to see if any of those were near a sewer line, it could have leaked in and contributed to a higher flow. Um, ultimately, we got what their water usage was for the month, and I looked at, right here, I thought, my feeling, I, when I was looking at it, my thought was, the best way to do it is see what their water usage was, and then see how much sewer as a percentage of that water usage, and there are always more than their, you know, they always send us more fluid on what their water usage is, because there are their groundwater sources there, uh, there's process things, there's cooling, things that blow down. They average about a hundred and twenty-five percent. I've had nineteen months of data, or a little more than that, I, I guess if you take out the two bad months. So I looked at it first with just the, the nineteen-month average, subtracting out that one month, and I looked at it with an eighteen-month, the other good eighteen months out of that twenty, and applied that same average to it, so it's only a hundred and twenty-four percent of what their water flow is. Um, and that gave us numbers that were pretty realistic, too, for May, twenty-two million, twenty-two point seven almost, and for June, it would be twenty-six point four. So, it is obviously a considerable adjustment, um, but it's not really, I guess, that big of an adjustment, because the only one we did was run, again, so that's more than we got. So, I just wanted to make sure to go over with the board and see if you guys concur, I guess, with that, you obviously haven't looked at all the same data or had all the same stuff, um, but ultimately, um, I believe that's what's fair, that's what is accurate, that's something that's justifiable, when we look at the numbers and say, hey, here's what it is, um, and it's the best way we can know about it. And they're still working on their flow meters, unexpected more flows, we just, we waited so long because we're waiting to see what July did, and then when we were close, we're talking about it and still trying to figure it out, so, I said, why don't we just figure out and see what August is, and make sure that it's going right, and those, August is down to nineteen million gallons, and July was, um, somewhere like twenty-four, I think. So they're all in line with the history, and obviously, look at this one, one chart there, that, uh, those two months were definitely an outlier, so, um, so there was something, something goofy, I even went through with their flow meter calibration reports, and by line by line, there's a whole bunch of stuff, and just looking for any differences to see, because if something else was the number of readings they took, was the interval in between the readings, was there something where it was reporting it twice as fast for some reason, then, but looking at the data, everything was the same, everything was the same, so I think we did check it all out, um, and, uh, you know, and they're on it, and we're keep looking at it, but I think that, just want to make sure that they said it's okay with the board, if, if there's any other questions about it, and that's what we, I told them that this is what I was going to present to the board, um, and I haven't heard anything back. Like I said, their, their request, or their ask, I guess, was saying, hey, can we just use twenty, which was simplified and probably not that far off, but this at least gives us some justification, because we're basing it on something that's kind of finite, that we know what their, here's something that's meager, and we can figure out what that, what that rate is, and go off a number off of that, so.
Uh, they made further adjustments to, I mean, they should have made it right now for September, August and September.
Yeah, I haven't had the September, I've got August, um, and August was, like I said, it was back down to nineteen million, uh, which was kind of in line with where they usually are.
I think that's.
Yeah, and September I haven't gotten yet, usually it's around the tenth of the month, I'll make ten to ten to fifteen, somewhere in there, um, that's where I'll get them. There's nothing that stuck right out, there was, like I said, there was minor adjustments, I got their calibration report in here somewhere, if anybody really wants to go to sleep, but it, it said it was measured, you know, the level was measured at, uh, some, at this time, when they came out and checked it afterwards, it measured at seven point eighty-seven inches, well, with display red, uh, eight point one four inches. So you can, you can figure out what the size of the flume and see what that is, but that doesn't, that wouldn't help for an extra.
So they switched out anything, or did they account for the anomaly that you got here?
They just went back and kind of recalibrated the equipment, and went back, and it was, they said, but funny, this was in June, the next month was still a little goofy, which was June, was still a little goofy, but it dropped off. I mean, this shows a real sharp drop off, but there's only two points, it's month of the month, one single point, so, um, I do have daily, you know, this is, this is one, one day in, in May, um, and you, and this is going from, you know, the average, their million gallons a day, fourteen hundred forty, this, this is showing here a difference, a swing between fifteen hundred and fifty to twelve hundred and fifty gallons a minute, which is a humongous amount, a gallon a minute.
Yep.
Um, you're what, about a million gallons a month? Fourteen, forty-eight times, twenty-four times, thirty-one. So, um, I mean, this is, so this is obviously something that's all out of whack. Um, I mean, we can look at the data that close, but I don't see the benefit, because I don't think we're going to determine what.
Okay, so good. We're going to get a little bit more in line, and.
Yeah. And I think it's still, like I said, there.
I saw from the end of that graph, like, it's now back.
Yeah, yep, these are, this is where it always, you know, and it's pretty, pretty tight, uh, grouping for a trend that's over a five-year, this is from seventeen to twenty-two, so it's a pretty tight grouping, obviously, there's, and these, these are, each line is a five million gallon per month difference, but pretty tight here, this is, yeah, that's a, that's what you don't want to see on your EKB.
Okay.
Come on.
Uh, what, and the reduction in what we're building yet, do we need to go like that?
I, we haven't built it, so we're not doing a, and I guess it'd be a good question for now, we're not doing a, an adjustment, their permit is silent in, in that specific regard, it says a permit in a day, uh, two hundred, excuse me, if the flow meter failure occurs more than two calendar days in any month, Xerox will look by the village in writing to explain the reason for the flow meter failure and steps he had taken to correct the problem. They certainly, as soon as we got it, I was calling him, he was, hey, I was just on the phone, I could call you, and we've got, you know, emails, we've worked on it immediately, trying to determine the cause of it, so I'm comfortable there that that, the thing was satisfied. Um, and as I said, for days when the flow is not available due to the flow meter failure, the highest recorded daily flow for that month shall be reported. If, if nothing was accurate, we have nothing really to, or we don't know it was accurate, we have nothing to, to really, so, this was the best approach, I think, to come to that and what was real.
As I said, the number that you got there is so hard to be known, was it actually true?
Yeah.
That's true for water.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was a human thing, so. Thank you. Little word?
You, you don't know if Xerox is agreeable to pay based on your hundred and twenty-four percent of their water usage, right? You said they didn't get back to you.
They didn't, I haven't heard back on, right, so.
If they say no, what are you authorizing? Because this, this doesn't fit, this doesn't fit into any written agreement with Xerox, where it's obvious that something was messed up.
Right.
So, you know, frankly, you know, to a certain large extent, any bill the village sends to them for those two months is arbitrary. to them for those two months is arbitrary, because it's not based on the actual flow, whether it's based on the average that they want, or Jake's average of water usage, you know, it's, so, whatever you come to an agreement with them, send them a bill.
They'll pay.
All right, you know, all right, it really, yeah, I don't know what you're authorizing.
Right, I, I agree totally.
You'll come, you'll, you'll work out something, maybe they'll just agree to your hundred and twenty-four percent.
I think I'm very agreeable on this, so.
With your powers, the first one, you probably kept, kept up to agree to that.
Yeah, that's, to be fairness, it's all we just wanted to do, so. Could I, one more thing, and it's not, it's not any action, um, I just wanted to see if I could, for that, for maybe not the next agenda or down from there, there exists a change of vehicle and traffic laws that authorized, um, towns and villages, and if there's something in the municipal homer law, you can set the, the speed limit to thirty miles an hour, where it was, when you said it came, couldn't go below thirty, they just changed that tonight, can set it now below twenty-five is the maximum speed limit. Um, we've had a lot of requests, um, especially in our side streets, or, you know, thirty's pretty fast, if you're, you're putting down, you know, Park Avenue or Elster, or anywhere, thirty's pretty fast. Um, I think the way we set our speed limit always has been a village-wide speed limit, um, which I still frankly don't understand, because the Phillips Road is, it's, village-wide speed limit is thirty, except for Phillips Road's thirty-five, and maybe it can be village-wide unless it says otherwise, I don't know how that works. Um, it, but it seems backwards, normally it would be thirty unless it's reduced, like at school zone or something. Um, but I would like to, in order to do that, you'd have to have a traffic engineer, the requirement is that you have, it's based on some sort of studies or some sort of logic, have a traffic engineer do it, so, I just want to get some prices, just to say, hey, what would this type of study be, or what would this, uh, cost be to provide the documentation needed to consider this law? Um, not pull the trigger or anything yet, and have, say, they started on it, but, um, just wanted to go on to see if that's something we should do.
Whatever. I'll pull you in here, said my car doesn't do twenty-five, so I'll pull your house, I'll pull your house in. I think the thing is, is a village-wide speed limit applies just to village roads.
Is that how?
Well, Phillips Road's a county road, you don't have the right to set, you don't have the right to set this pretty, the county road, it's like, it was just like one on four, expressway goes through, part of the village, you can't, obviously, thirty miles an hour, like, you know, that's a.
What we do on two fifteen.
But you've got a separate sign that says thirty.
Oh, that's true, yeah, it's village-wide.
It's posted there, I mean, it's, okay, posted there, it's posted there, thirty.
Okay.
So it's village, it's so you don't have to go and post speed limit signs in every village road.
Right.
Yeah, just every street.
That'd be a lot of noise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I say, yeah, it's reasonable, get the study in there.
See what it is. Yeah, this, I had an email about wood chips the other day.
Well, I read the new law, it requires a municipal light study before you can.
No, it's, it was, there's a basis for a traffic engineer to provide documentation, I don't know exact wording, it's like sixteen forty-three, I think, vehicle and traffic laws.
I remember just seeing it where they, where they lowered the, the speed limits, town riders, but I didn't, I never read it particularly.
And it was just, like I said, I got an email about, you know, one municipality at wood chips are trying to get rid of the thing, what do they want, and, oh, no, 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 it's, and somebody else is responsible, somebody, what about this, it's a pain, it's a burden, so that's, that's what's up with, you know, before, we'd have taken, connected the assembly, right, or, then, you have to go to Albany, if you wanted to change it below thirty because of, well, I think you could, you could only do it on a street-by-street basis. Oh, right.
Like in your mind, but then you'd have to post signs on all those, you know, on the street, you know, if Dunham and. Well, that would be a little weird, you know, you want a street like that, and the next street over is by the highway.
But if you can't, traction engine.
Yeah, find out what the cost is.
Okay. And I will now for a, uh, motion to close meeting.
I'll make it.
A second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
We need to adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you.